All right, we'll call this meeting to order. The time is 6:00 PM and Tracy's taken roles, so let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Item three, review, revise, and approve the agenda. If there's no changes, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? It's written. Moved by trustee Davy. Second by trustee McShane. Any public comment on this agenda item? All those in favor? It is unanimous to all trustees present. All right. Next is item four. We'll approve the minutes from the board meeting of August 12th. Do I have a motion to approve? Moved by trustee Davy, thank you. Second by trustee Walsh. Any public comment on this item? Don't see any. All in favor? Unanimous to all trustees present. Next, we'll approve the Board of Trustees' regular meetings for August 19th. Do I have a motion? Moved by trustee McShane. Second by trustee Walsh. Any public comments? See none. All in favor? Unanimous to all trustees present. Meg, I just figured you were gonna raise your hand.
Yes.
You're all good. No worries. Let's see. Written correspondence, if you send your pack and it is online. B is public comment. Public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not a time for the board response or for public to ask questions. Do not infringe on the rights to privacy of others. Please sign in and spell first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Chair or acting chair, that's me, may interrupt or terminate an individual speaker if the statements are out of order, are over three minutes, or personally directed at an individual. Do we have any public comment?
We do. We have one public comment for non-agenda items.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am Jim Clark. I'm here tonight as a member of Missoula Sunrise Rotary Club. We are part of Rotary International, which is a service club that is dedicated to service above self. And part of how we serve in Missoula proper, we work with one of the Partnership for Children Youth Homes, which we've done for nearly 30 years now in support of the kids that are in that program. This particular home is labeled now, named now, the Sunrise Home because of our involvement with them, the Sunrise Rotary Club. These children, six of them, up to six of them, are from abusive backgrounds. Usually they have attachment disorders. Very difficult for them to trust adults, and that's part of what we do, is to work to build that trust. Also locally, we provide a third grade, a dictionary to every third grader in Missoula County Public Schools. It's really more than a dictionary, and if any of you've ever had a third grader that got one, you probably know that. They love them. There are lots of things in that. On the international level, we are involved with the long-term project to eradicate polio from the world, and that's nearly accomplished. There are just three countries that now have polio left in them. We also, our local club is involved in an international project in Guatemala to provide clean water for several communities in that, in that country, and our, our club is actively involved in that project. To fund projects like that on the international level, Paul Harris, who established Rotary about 120 years ago, established a foundation. It's now called the Rotary International Foundation. It's a very large foundation, and each year, most Rotary members donate to that foundation, as I have done, and as Superintendent Hill has done during his time with our club. So with his donations and by action of Missoula, of our Sunrise Rotary Club Board of Directors, we are very pleased to award Superintendent Hill with a Paul Harris Fellowship Award. He is now a Paul Harris Fellow.
Thank you for the public comment. Any other public comment? All right, next up is announcements from our wonderful Superintendent Hill, fresh off of an award.
Thank you so much. All right, so my update today, first off, Safe Gun Storage Campaign is underway. We got a little bit of press from local media on that. Trigger locks, cable locks available at all of our high schools and our middle schools. Parents can get two trigger locks and up to five cable locks, if not more, if needed and requested. This was something that we started last year and has been highly successful, and so we're just continuing that partnership again this year. So we're grateful for those organizations that helped make that possible, and that is in part response to this being Suicide Prevention Month, and so we're trying to do our part to make sure that we are limiting access to deadly means for our students in Next week, we have building tours for Whittier, our old admin building, Cold Springs, Emma Dickinson, Prescott, and Mount Jumbo, and that is part of our efforts to reach out to our community to talk about our current facilities and some of our underused and underutilized facilities. And so those dates and times, we'll be sort of send you a specific invitation to, but it's an opportunity for our community to come to us to see, to go on a tour of these facilities, and offer their input as to what their best use could be for, for the future. The other thing I was going to share with you, just enrollment, so it's kind of a mixed Looking from last year this week to this year this week, we are down 123 students in EL through five. We're up 57 in middle school, so six through eight, and we're down 101 in high school. So it's a pretty, those are some pretty large numbers. On, on the bright side of some of that, if we were to exclude early literacy from those numbers from last year to this year, we would actually be down 180 students in elementary, in that EL through five grade, so, or kindergarten through five. So the EL program is making a difference in terms of bolstering those numbers. Last year, we had a cap of about 150 EL students. This year, we're over 200 with room to grow, so we're continuing to assess and place kids where we have space available, so we're excited for that, and have heard nothing but positive from our, our staff regarding our EL program and what it means for our kindergarteners and the effect that that's having on their school. So we're excited about that. Also got, you know, part of the question that comes up when we talk enrollment is, where are the kids? Where are they going? You know, what's, what's going on in our other, that's causing this? And so we got the homeschool numbers from the county, so these are students who are registered with, for homeschool with Missoula County, and these would be the students who live within our resident zone. Anybody care to guess how many kindergarteners are homeschooling this year?
Zero.
Seventy.
Eight.
Oh, okay.
Eight.
So I win?
Yeah. Some people already had the information, so, so I thought that was really interesting. So K-8, they're, the average is 13 students per grade level, so there's 120 K-8 homeschool students and 160 high school students, so averaging about 15 per grade level in the high school. So not seeing huge numbers in our homeschool population that are having an impact on our numbers locally. So again, it's one of those things, like, it's really hard to explain where all the kids going. Is it declining birth rates? What, what's happening there? But I just wanted to share that. So that's my update for tonight.
Thank you Superintendent Hill. Onto item seven, which is our consent agenda. There's no board discussion for consent agenda items. These are routine items. If any member of the board wishes to discuss a consent agenda item, there must be a motion made, seconded and voted upon to move it into, onto the agenda. So our one item on this consent agenda is approval of consent, or I'm sorry, approve out of district attendance agreements for this year, or for, yeah, for this year. So do I have a motion, elementary motion?
To leave, we're voting on it.
Yeah, we're voting on it, yep. Trustee Witt, moved by trustee Witt, seconded by trustee Walsh. No board discussion, any public comment? See none. All elementary trustees in favor? Please raise your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Now, do I have a high school motion? Moved by trustee McShane. Second by trustee Davy. No board discussion, any public comment? See none. All those in favor? Please raise your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. All right, new business, 8A, approve the personnel report. Mica, this is you.
In the words of my esteemed colleague, Trevor Lebowski, there's nothing of note here, just the usual report. Yes.
Can you explain to me what I was hearing about, about this, about the district only approving the max number of 15 number of employees to move steps? Where did we come up with that number 15 and what is the history behind it?
Yes, can we talk about that when we talk about the contract ratification?
Yes.
Cool.
All right. So we split this into elementary and secondary as well, so do I have an elementary motion? Moved by trustee Walsh, seconded by trustee Witt. Any comments on this agenda item? See none. Any public comment? See none. All elementary trustees in favor? Please signify by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. All right, do I have a high school motion? Moved by trustee Davy. Seconded by trustee McShane. Any final comments? See none. Any public comment? See none. All those in favor? Please signify by raising your hand. Unanimous as to all trustees present. Next up is ratifying the two-year agreement with MEA MFPE, and that's back to Mica.
Thank you. So tonight before you is a recommendation from the administration to approve the two-year agreement, the collective bargaining agreement with the MEA MFPE. Going to talk a little bit about some of the highlights from that, but first want to just acknowledge and thank Shannon Judge, who is here with us tonight as the lead negotiator for the MEA, and Scott Shook, the union president, for their work with their team to successfully negotiate an agreement with us. You can see on the, the agenda, the salary and wage increases include 2,100 to each step for both the 25, 26, and 26, 27 school year, as well as a $25 increase to the district insurance contribution for all eligible employees, and for now, that is one thing that we are able to agree on around the insurance, in part because we have an insurance committee that will meet. We talk about rates. There may be some additional impact to employees with our insurance, depending on where things are sitting financially and how, how things have trended with our, with our claims. So that still remains to be seen, but we'll, we'll get there on that. Some of the other items of note, Trevor left me his notes on this. We had, in addition to the salary increases, we had an increase from two days to three days per year for personal leave. We also included a longevity stipend, so any teacher who's been with the district for 20 years will be paid an additional $750 stipend along with their contract for each year. Anyone who's been with the district for 25 years will be $1,000 stipend, and anyone with 30 years or more will be a $1,500 stipend. So recognizing that longevity, and as we talk, retaining is the new recruitment with our teaching staff, so we've included that. We are also compliant with Stars language, so we had some requirements to make sure that our starting teacher pay met at least the average teacher salary for MCPS employees. And so, again, working through negotiations, we have that language in there so that if we were to fall short, we would be in a place where we can boost that starting teacher pay for that cell. There are a lot of other little components to the negotiations. The full document will be available on our website. You're, I think it's 74 pages or somewhere in that range, and that you'll be welcome to read and explore at your convenience, but I wanted to get to make a question about the lane changes. We refer to that as horizontal movement, so we have vertical movement, which are steps, which indicate number of years, and then horizontal movement is about educational attainment. One of the things that we found over time, and this isn't unusual for MCPS, is that the ability to earn credit and move across and earn a master's degree has been expedited by the fact that you don't have to actually physically attend a school in the summertime or at other times to earn your degree. You can start amassing credits and building them quite frequently and, and at a greater pace than maybe you would in, when I was getting my master's degree. The net result of that is an increased burden to the budget when people are just moving year at, like, in one year's time, moving from, say, a $45,000 salary to a $70,000 salary. So last year, it was negotiated that we were going to limit that to 12, and then again, this year we negotiated, we upped the number for this current year to 15, and the next year, subsequent year is at 12. That is to help control the budget, because if we have, if we're putting all, if we have to budget for those additional expenses, that means we're reducing the amount that we have to, to pay out to other staff over the, for all, all of the members.
Can you explain to me how you decide who the 15 people are, and on average, like, how many people are trying to access this benefit?
Yeah.
Are we talking, we're kicking five people, 10 people, 20? And how does, how do you decide?
So I believe it's first come, first served, so, and at any time, Scott, if you, or Shannon, if I'm incorrect on that, it's basically you're getting in the queue. I think as of right now, I don't think we're at 15 yet. We were at 12, I think, when we first started. There might be a few more that have, have since come forward, but they had to notify by a certain time.
Any other questions? If you're done, sorry, are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Questions? All right. Oh, you got one, okay.
So I could be wrong on what the Stars Act did and, and how we do the starting teacher pay, because I believe, isn't there like, you have to be this percentage in this year, and then goes up, up, up? Are we making progress? Because we were set, I think, for the first couple years at least originally. Are we making progress to getting towards the end of that Stars, or did we go backwards? Did we stay the same? Where are we at?
Yeah, no, we're making progress towards doing that. One of the, I think one of the key changes from a negotiation standpoint is negotiating a, a dollar amount on a cell as opposed to a percentage, because if we negotiate a percentage, 3% of 40,000 and 3% of 80,000 are two different numbers, and so you just continue to maintain kind of a status quo on that separation between what is your starting teacher pay and your ending teacher pay. By applying a dollar amount to each cell, $2,100 means more to someone who's making 40,000 than it does, and I shouldn't say means more, but it's a difference if I'm, yes, as a higher percentage. So that's getting us in the, moving in the right direction.
Go on.
Related to that, so the safety valve would just automatically move starting teachers up if it became necessary on just kind of nowish time, like?
Yeah, so what we, what we're required to do is report annually now what our actual expenditures were. We've always done this, but now we report it in a very systematic way, every teacher's salary, and then that is then computed on a spreadsheet basically to give us what our district's average is. So you have to either meet the minimum, which is 11 times the quality educator payment, or the average of your starting teacher, or of your median teacher salary. So we'll just say, for example, that the average teacher salary is $70,000, and so we have to meet, in year one, we had to meet 60%?
Year one, 62, I think.
Sixty, sixty, sixty-two, sixty-four, sixty, up to 70%. So by year five, we have to be 70% of the average teacher salary. So what this creates is a moving target for us essentially, because you could have some teachers who retire, and it could actually drop that number, or you have a bunch of teachers who matriculate through, and it actually increases that number, and so that's just something we have to be aware of. But that safety valve is, yes, if, if we were to ever fall below that, we will pay whatever that minimum amount is to have us at 70%. And I think with where our starting teacher salary is at 50,100, we're sitting right around 68 or 69%.
So really, this isn't, that's probably not going to operate this contract, we don't think, and then we'll start having to sort of think about that money, because that will be after budget and all that, right?
Yeah.
Sort of, okay.
Trustee Walsh.
Yeah, I know one of the biggest criticisms of the Stars Act was that teachers with a lot of experience were feeling left in the dust, that they weren't being honored for their expertise, and I'm just so proud of our district for building that in. So we cherish our teachers, and I love to see it.
Thank you Jenny. Anyone else with a question? See none? Do I have a motion to, the administration is recommending the trustees ratify the two-year agreement. Moved by trustee Davy. Seconded by trustee Witt. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment?
We do.
Hello, everyone. I'm Scott Shook. I'm president of the Missoula Education Association. Thanks for allowing us the time to, to speak. This is Shannon.
My name is Shannon Judge. I'm a second grade teacher at Russell, and then I'm also the second VP of the MEA Union and was the lead negotiator as well.
And we would also like to recommend that you approve this agreement. Was it everything we wanted? No. Was it more than the district wanted to give? Probably, and that's kind of the hallmark of a good, a good negotiation. It was a good package. I think there was something for everyone. In addition to the things that Superintendent Hill listed, we also were able to get a, a section about priority-dependent enrollment, so those teachers can have someone, have their, their dependent at the school of their choice, whether it's the school closest to where they live, or the school closest to where they work, or the school where they work. They have priority enrollment options now. What else?
We got some language in to add a safety committee. We've heard, and you've heard from lots of staff, not just in our union, about safety concerns from students and also from members of the public, and so we have a working committee to discuss how we can make that better for everyone in our community.
Want to also publicly thank the other members of our team, Joe Fisher, Melissa Boyes, Melissa Moss Larson, and Melanie Charleston, our MFPE field consultant. I think it was a great team. Also appreciate Mica sitting in while Trevor wasn't there, and Trevor when he was there, for, for leading their side of the table.
And the rest of the team that sat through all of those with us too, from the district, thank you. Denise, and even Pat came back after he was done and officially finished with us, so.
And there were some challenging things. We weren't happy with the limits on horizontal moves, but we agreed to a, a package, what we agreed to what was best for everybody, even though that might not have been best for some individuals. We want what's best for the most. Is that it?
That's all.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And again, we recommend you, you approve this agreement.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Do you have to ask questions, Scott?
No, we're way past the question part Jenny. We're, we're past the comment part. You are way back there. No, you, you can, I, no, well, you can ask a question. Go ahead and ask a question. You want to, go ahead. I'm gonna break rules.
Okay, it's about the limits on horizontal moves. So let's say a teacher works over the summer to get their master's degree, but they miss out on one of those slots. Are they able the following year to put their name in?
Yes. Yeah, there would, there's no, it's just a limit within that year of moving more than two lanes, and so it's just the, and Pat would probably have been able to explain it best, but when we used to budget maybe $100,000 for horizontal movement, now we're budgeting $350,000 for horizontal movement. So when you say the, we only have this much of a pie to give, and a big chunk of it is going to a very small group of people, it limits what we have available for everybody else, and so we're just saying it's going to take more time to get to that place, but everybody's going to get to that place that wants to get to that place.
So we're still encouraging and incentivizing continued education, we just need an affordable management of the hose at which we can pour those dollars out. Okay.
I think it's what's disappointing is that folks that entered into master's programs before this was set into place, that just completed their masters, are probably really not happy, would be my guess, but I, I mean, I understand, I just wanted to know kind of the ins and outs of why, and wondering, and suggesting a more formal process, and maybe folks that didn't get it this year are first in line next year, when steps are being taken into account, is it kind of incentivizing further education to do the job? Because it's a pretty big pay, pay bump.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second, so we are on to the vote. All those in favor of approving, or ratifying the two-year agreement with MEA MFPE, please signify by raising your hands. Unanimous to all trustees present. Onto approving the hourly rate for substitute bus drivers, and this, Mica, again.
Yes, so we are recommending a $17 an hour rate for substitute bus drivers. We have a small fleet of minivans, also known as school buses, and we employ six drivers, but we know from experience that people will be gone from time to time for a variety of reasons, and we need to be able to employ someone to backfill those positions when they are not available for us.
Thank you. Any trustee questions? All right, no trustee questions. The motion from the, is, the recommended motion is, they recommend ratifying, oh, no, that's the wrong one, my apologies, approve the resolution, ensuring, is that the motion? Ensuring the quality education through, no, I'm, I'm all messed up here, Mica. Here we go. Yeah. Recom, is the recommend?
Recommend we approve the, trustees approve the substitute bus driver.
Oh, you got me mixed up there Tracy. See, that's what I get for reading. She's messing with me. Yes. What Mica said. Can you read it for me?
You bet. Administration recommends trustees approve the substitute bus driver rate to pay.
There you go. So I have a motion. Motion by trustee McShane. Seconded by trustee Walsh. Thank you. Any final trustee comments? See none? Any public comment? See none? All those in favor? Unanimous to all trustees present. Thank you. All right. in favor? Unanimous to all trustees present. Thank you. All right, we are on to item number nine, which is Board of Trustees' Approve Resolution for Submission to Montana School Board Association. This is something we talked about in our retreat last week, but Jenny, I'm going to pass it off to you.
All right, so this is a resolution. Basically, it's us as a board voting to put pressure on MTSBA to pursue safety and technology funding so that we don't have to keep running these dang levies, as well as special needs funding, which I think embodied, originally, we were thinking English language learning, as federal funding has diminished for that, but we decided we needed to broaden that because it's also gifted and talented and all those other populations that we think the state should be funding. So, that's our resolution. Should I go into more detail, or we have it?
Maybe we just have some questions. Anybody have any questions? We talked it through a little bit at the board retreat, but maybe for anybody that wasn't at the retreat or had questions that popped up, any questions? No questions. I love you guys tonight. This is great. So, I need a motion, a full board motion to approve, to ensure the quality education through comprehensive funding reform for submission to the M, Montana School Board Association. Do I have a motion? Moved by trustee Davy, seconded by trustee McShane. I like you. You raise your hand a lot. That's great. All right. Any final trustee comments? No final trustee comments? Any public comment? Oh, there is. I'm sorry. Trustee Davy?
I was just going to say, good work. This is, I'm excited to see this moving forward.
Anybody else? Any public comment? See none. All those in favor? Please raise your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present, and we will adjourn. It is 6:32. Thank you.